Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Needles, can you take roll call for the record, please?
Sure. Commissioner Baaco.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Commissioner Guardioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Niri. Lisa Catania. Mike Pierce. Myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's caucus meeting. We met tonight in executive session to discuss personnel and litigation matters. With that said, I'll take citizen comments via the phone at this time. After that, I'll take citizen comments for the people present in the room. If you, if you'd like to dial in, the phone number is five seven one, seven four eight, four zero two one. Again, the phone number is five seven one, seven four eight, four zero two one. The code to enter is zero one five, seven four one, four, uh, two four eight pound. Again, the code is zero one five, seven four one, two four eight pound. To mute your phone, please dial star six. After muting your phone, state your name, your address, then begin your comment. You're given two minutes to speak and then be placed on mute after your comment. I'll give it one minute for any citizen comments via the, via the telephone.
Hello?
Hello, how are you tonight? Yes.
Hi, I'm good. My name is Robert Brookman. I'm actually an attorney for Vincent Smith, who is in the audience tonight and a member of the community. Um, Mr. Smith may be speaking himself tonight, but I just want to make a few quick comments. Um, as I'm sure certain members of the board are aware, Mr. Smith is an owner of property in the community that was bequeathed to him back in nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, he attempted to construct a modular home that through no fault of his own and through construction error has a lot of problems has resulted in litigation. However, the township has required him, and we believe improperly, to, to pay for and be responsible for the construction of, of the street. He's made every good faith effort to do so. He's put fifteen thousand dollars into an escrow account, even though frankly, we don't think that should be his responsibility. I can get into reasons why that's the case. Um, we've had multiple contractors work on it. No matter what is done, it has not been up to, the township has found it not to be up to their satisfaction. Um, but we continue in those efforts. I've been working with the township solicitor, Mr. Pierce, in good faith. Um, and I think we have a good working relationship to say, okay, this money is in escrow. Let's, let's have the township do this. We're waiting for an estimate. Um, and it's gone on for a long time and there's been a, this is not, Mr. Pierce's fault, but this has gone, this goes back a long time and we've been working to try to get this done in good faith for a very long time. And what we would like is, in the interim, this entire time, my client, a disabled veteran, someone who frankly has done nothing wrong, has been denied a certificate of occupancy. And what we'd like to propose is, in the interim, while we're working to get this thing done, what, let's grant him a certificate of occupancy, allow him to be in the home. There's absolutely no reason that he shouldn't be allowed to be in the home at this time. And that's what we're asking for. And as Mr. Smith and his brother, um, who are all, who's also there tonight can speak to, what they're asking Mr. Smith to do is be responsible for a road that serves the entire community. A road that, that goes well down to his lot down, down the street. And as a result, there, because of the configuration of the road, there's flooding that, that is occurring, that he has no way of controlling. There's, they're asking him to, to construct a road that goes four or five lots down. Um, there's, there's stormwater management issues. There are community issues that are, have to be addressed that, that benefit the entire community that frankly should not be Mr. Smith's responsibility. But even if it were to be considered his responsibility per local ordinance, again, there's absolutely no reason at this time, they should not be, granted a certificate of occupancy while we work this out in the interim and while we, while we wait to have the road completed. And, uh, that's all I have to say. I'm sure Mr. Smith and his brother Martin, who's in the audience as well, have more to say on the subject.
Thank you. Um, I believe Commissioner Whitaker, this is in your, your ward. Um, I think there was a comment about a couple lots deep that the road had to go. In my understanding, it was, it was about seventeen feet. So I just want some clarification on, on the exact length of it. Yes, y- yes, sir. Yes. Uh, can you just please state your name and, and address?
Are you asking, uh, me on the phone?
My name is Martin Smith. I'm the, I'm the co-borrower on the house. Address is twenty-three thirty-four. Okay, um, everything Mr. Brookman said was, was correct. Right? But there's some more stuff that, that should be addressed here today. I have pictures of all the streets in the, in the community. All the streets go back all the way down to a cul-de-sac. Our street does not. Our street stops. It doesn't even go all the way down to the end of the street. Here's, here's some of the pictures. Okay, according, I looked up some, some of the regulations. I was gonna go and cite them all to you, what the, what the code is for the Delaware County. Okay, so we all know what it is. All the streets must have access to each lot. This is, this, this is, this is, uh, I think this is, um, William Street. William Street, as you can see.
I think, I think we have a picture of.
She's gonna pass around the pictures of each street. William Street has, at the end of the street, a cul-de-sac with a storm drain. Okay, so I'll let her pass that down.
I think the issue is, if, if the adjacent property was ever to get developed and the road would have to get extended, who's, who, right now, I believe the ordinance states that whatever portion of the road or potential road that is in front of an undeveloped lot has to be developed by the developer.
According to, according to street design, sir.
Excuse me. So if we bypass it at this moment in time, if somebody else comes in to build, who's gonna be responsible to, to put? And that's a question that the board has to answer.
Well, well, to, first and foremost, okay, nineteen seventy-nine, there was a block grant for all the streets to be done. A hundred thousand dollars was awarded for the streets to be done. Okay, here's, here's our street. This is the plan. This is the plan.
Can, can, can you hand it to, to Mr. Needle, Needle's, please? I, I think I've.
We own, uh, lot one twenty-one and one twenty-two, seventeen seventy-eight. We moved out.
Yeah, but you, but you're talking about a block grant that was done, that was done, that was done in, that was done in nineteen seventy-nine. So that, that money's no longer here.
Seventy-nine, nineteen seventy-eight, we moved into Twin Oaks. The street was unapproved to where, where our house was. Nineteen seventy-nine, there was a block grant to improve all the streets in Twin Oaks. Okay, that picture right there, it was one twenty-one and one twenty-two lot that we own. When you did the street, you didn't do it to the, to the, to the end of the street.
I did not do it. Wasn't, wasn't me, but I, I understand.
My point of it is, is, right? Street should have been improved. Prior to, prior to, well, the street should have been improved. All the way up to lot one twenty-two. It was not. It was sixteen feet short. Sixteen feet short. Now you're asking us. Township. Asking us to improve the street. Fifteen feet prior.
I'm at, so this is Commissioner Wood's ward, so I'm gonna let her. We'll, we'll get her feedback and.
Okay, so in the pictures that I show you. One twenty-two. One twenty, one twenty, one twenty-three is, 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 is your, your uncle's lot. So basically what I'm, basically what I'm saying is, all according to the county guidelines, the street is supposed to go to everybody's lot. And it was not. It was not. It's supposed to go all the way down to the end of the street, lot one twenty-four. It was not. And then, if you didn't, if, if you decided, well, we're not gonna do it down there because there's no houses down there. The street needs to be cleared. Cleaned out.
Are, are you asking for a waiver?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking, uh, for one, the street needs to be done. Needs to be cleaned. There's a telephone pole there. Telephone pole there. All according to the county guidelines, supposed to have access to all utilities. Stormwater, there's a store, there's a manhole down there for the, for the sewer department. That's not, that, that's, that's, that's an overgrown jungle down there. Why? Because the rainwater comes down, the street goes in there and it feeds the plants. And now you've got a jungle in the middle of the street. The street needs to be cleaned out. Cut down. What, I'm asking for a certificate of occupancy because we should have been grandfathered in because you didn't do the street all the way up to the sixteen feet, I mean, all the way up to the, the, our property. Yes. From the township.
I, I don't know.
I want the street cleared. Because it's a, because it's, i- i- it's, it's causing water to flood into your, into your uncle Duck's yard. And he, and he has, he was supposed to be here tonight, but he, he didn't come. His house has been flooded. Because the water is going down the street and it's being blocked and it's going into his house. That's two. And, 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 and also, we shouldn't have been doing the street in the first place. So I want the escrow money returned to us because we shouldn't have do, we shouldn't do the street sixteen feet prior because it should have been, ought to have been done. And, and if you do those things, everything will be cool with us.
That, for, thank you for coming out and talking to us. Uh, if you'd like to make a comment?
Yeah, um. Reason why it floods down at the bottom of the street at the end of that fifteen feet. But the other side of the street, I did fifteen by twelve. The street is twenty-four feet wide. That was the top across the street. Locked up. So the water goes around that and it stops right there at these, at the fifteen feet. Because the, there is no storm management. The water would continue down the street because the rest of the street is locked up. So that, uh, it would be like that. So that's more at some place to go. Onto the next lot. Unless you're asking either provide stormwater management for the entire street. As long as the street is downed, wanna continue to stop right there. Because the rest of the street is locked up. And it should have been done down the lots one twenty-four. At least kept clear. Where it has no place to go there.
Can you just hand it, can you just give it to Mr. Pierce? Now, now, this is, this is the code, even.
Yeah, you can just hand him to the manager and he'll, he'll hand it to us. Um, I'm gonna ask our engineer, did you have any comments, Lisa?
The only thing that I wanted to explain is because when Mr. Smith's contractor had done the excavation for not only the house, but as well the secrete that's in the backyard, he piled all of the debris and all of the excess material at the end of the street, end of the cart wall. That has not been cleared. That is one of the items that is on my punch list. Matter of fact, I, I think, I know that, that George has it. Nicole, I think you may already have a copy of pictures that I took of water that is laying in the street currently. Because it's dammed because of the debris. There was some debris that was removed from the site by a second contractor. Who was also supposed to do patchwork in the street from the water and sewer connections. Um, and he was supposed to do the extension. The extension was to go to the property line of, of this particular property. And solely to the property line. That's all that was asked of him. That's all that the ordinance requires. The ordinance also requires that there be curb and sidewalk to that property. Um, that's the best I can tell you in this point. I will tell you that we have had numerous meetings. I have taken at least two dozen phone calls from various contractors and had a couple meetings out on the site trying to get this resolved. So it's not for lack of effort, unfortunately, I'm not so sure that, that the contractor, um, is ready to come back and, and do what is necessary.
So what would cause, what was caused the flooding? Wait a minute. What would cause the flooding at, um, because I did speak to my uncle. What would cause the flooding at, on Douglas Street in the basement of the property behind it?
I, I don't have the answer to that. It's first I'm here yet, so I have no idea.
Because it didn't start until that house was built?
If I may interject, uh.
Okay. Okay.
If, if I can sort of lay down what you think about that problem.
Okay. All right, so, um, any other comments regarding this property? Yes, Mr. Trader?
Greg Trader, I'm twenty-three fifty-five Douglas. So I'm across the street and one house up from, uh, Mike's property. Two houses up from his brother's property. I bought my house in two thousand eight. When I bought my house in two thousand eight, that shrubbery, growth and all that stuff was down there. This is before his house, wait, wait, let me finish. That stuff was down before his house was built. Storm, in a, in a, with a big rainstorm, it would puddle down. The street was never extended to lot twenty-four. Never. And the ordinance says that the township should have done that. Now, a perfect example of a street that was extended all the way to the end of all the lots is Booker. With a storm drain and a cul-de-sac. So it's the township's responsibility to fix Douglas the same way, at least as, as the same as Booker. Now, should I want to sell my property? You know, I'm, I'm faced with somebody that looks down there and he might not want to buy. So the value of my property may go down because of that. So, that's all I.
I am not, I am not saying that there wasn't rush down there because it's an undeveloped street. At this point, it has not been improved to capture the the one, one, whatever.
One twenty-four.
One, now, one twenty.
So one twenty-two is the end of your property, which is where the agreement was, right? So one twenty-two was the agreement to go to your lot is, is what she, is what she's saying. Okay.
But when you initially did the street back in nineteen seventy-nine, lot was sixteen feet short.
So I don't think any of the streets were probably done back then when the grant was coming? Because I can tell you that Booker Avenue is a recent street that was done. That was recently, in the last ten years. So I understand what you're saying, that it should have been done, but what I'm saying is, I don't think any of the streets were fully developed. And over the course of the years, through funding, we have developed them. So go ahead.
It's a fine, right? As you know, my father was the president of the Twin Oaks Civic Association. Right? He petitioned the township for streets to be paved, streetlights, fire hydrants, everything. Here's the, here's the original paperwork that I have right here. Nineteen July nineteen seventy-nine to July nineteen eighty-two. To tell, I have exactly every year row and, and, and this help. How much they was allowed. And what was the purpose. It said that all the streets are developed nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen eighty-two. Three year block mark, here it is.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, here you go.
Okay.
Here it is. This is what it says. All the streets were supposed to be done at block. Was, they were. But all, all I'm trying to say is our property, one twenty-one, one twenty-two, were saying this would be good to the street. For sixteen feet short. Now you're denying me certificate of occupancy, telling me to put in the street sixteen feet. The sidewalk incurred, fifteen feet, fifteen feet sidewalk incurred. It should have been done nineteen seventy-nine.
Just trying to get you an extra foot, Vince.
So George, can you look into the, um, certificate of occupancy and find out, um, why that, why that was denied? Go ahead.
The driveway is not paved as of this point. That is required.
My driveway?
Yeah.
It's not according to the plan. According to the plan, it doesn't need to be. Unapproved dome.
Go ahead, Lisa.
The, and there should be walkway. There's some problems with the sidewalk. Walkway. Um, bill has a list.
All I can, was what they say, according to the plan.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm giving you ample time to speak.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna work with the engineer to find out what the, what the situation is with your, with your CO, your certificate of occupancy, okay?
At, at least it's over there, at least. At least we can get this resolved by the property office. So I can go ahead and, and in the property.
Okay.
A temporary?
Now, the other day when I, uh, I went out to take a look at the property after, uh, your brother came out now, uh, in the evening, the lights were on in the property and it did appear that people were moving about inside. So.
I had the one that they could live.
Okay, so we just, we're looking for.
So he's already there, then we need to give him a temporary, uh, uh, um, certificate of occupancy until we get the issues resolved, if you're already there.
I think we should get a legal opinion of what culpability the township has with that.
He's already in here, that's a problem. Not too interesting. He's already in, just admitted he's a byway.
Lisa, can I ask a question? How much would it cost to develop sixteen foot of road with curbs?
You already did it. You already put sixteen feet of road, fifteen feet.
Fifteen.
You already did it according to the plan. It failed inspection.
It's, it's not according to the plan, but we'll just leave it at that. It's on a punch list to be repaired.
So it has to be, okay.
Why isn't that?
I was under the impression it wasn't done yet.
So I think at this point in time.
Yeah.
Nicole, please get with, uh, our township engineer to see what, to see what we can work out.
Well, that's it, one more thing.
Well, we, we, we will do our best to work with you, just there's just something that we, 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 we need to work out. Thank you. All right?
Respect.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I want a copy of those. I want, I want a copy of that.
I think you're, uh, the way you would like to say, another comment and then, um, um, what have we got?
Uh, yes, I mean respectfully, we, we need a resolution of this. This, we're gonna work with you. Frankly, it's been going on for several years now. I mean, I, I think what we want is to put a motion before the, the board to say, one, that at least a temporary certificate of occupancy be issued because again, there's no, I, I cannot imagine why in the interim, uh, he should be either forced to live on the street or live in violation of the code. Uh, there's, there's simply no reason that, that in the interim, we shouldn't give him that interim relief. Um, and for all the reasons stated, it's, it's down to me because it is a township concern because the nineteen seventy-nine plan did provide for the construction of this road that's much further than the lot. And because there are township concerns pertaining to flooding, that it should have been paid for by the township. So those are the two things we'd like the board to act on frankly tonight because if it doesn't get acted on tonight, it's just gonna be another meeting later. It's gonna continue on in a way it's been continuing on for many years now. And, uh, and frankly, it's just not right. It's, and Mr. Smith is a disabled veteran. If anyone's at fault other than him, it's either the township or it's, or it's the, uh, or it's the, the contractors that we're currently in litigation with. Nobody can possibly fault him. So we would ask again for at least an interim certificate of occupancy and ultimately a determination that it's not his responsibility for the pay for this road and that the escrow amount be returned it.
Well, again, I'm gonna allow the commissioner of that board to talk to our township engineer and our township solicitor to try to digest everything. Uh, you know, there, there, there is liabilities that township can face if we issue per COs and temporary COs if things are, are done for certain obligations. So I'd just like to just, I, I'd like for Commissioner Whitaker to discuss it with our professionals. And hopefully by next week we can have a, a, a resolution. So thank you for coming. I'm sorry to get that going through this and, um, hopefully we'll have an answer by next week.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
All right, so wait for your copies and then if you could take these pictures and write the names of the streets on the back of it, that'll be helpful.
Awesome, thanks.
Hey, but let's not come up and speak. There's no more citizen comments in the office, I mean, in the building or via the phone. While we're on to do our presentation tonight. Um, we have a presentation for our twenty-one, our twenty, twenty-one bond issuance. I believe we have Randy and Tim Kennedy. Fortunately, who will be speaking.
Jim?
Jim, I'm sorry. The J looked like a T.
Jim Kennedy.
That's all right.
Even though I know you.
Right.
Good to see everybody.
George, have you, have you handed out this two-page exhibit to everyone or?
We're gonna go ahead and put it up on the screen while you speak, if that's all right?
Great, terrific. Just let me know when it's up. Just as background, oh, I can see it. Okay. Well, that's not mine, but you're close, George. Um, I think these are mics maybe. My clackens. While you're working that out, I'll just remind the board that you have three different type of retirement plans that you're looking at issuing a bond to cover the liabilities for. They are the police pension plan, the non-uniformed pension plan, and the police and public works OPEB plan. OPEB is other post-retirement benefits other than pension, which essentially means the health benefits that you promised to your police and public works employees. So the pension plan and the non-uniformed plan have been required to be pre-funded for years under Act two oh five and the township has done a great job of putting money in. You're building assets up in a trust, you're investing those assets wisely, and you're basically trying to pay those liabilities off over time. The OPEB benefits, the retiree medical benefits, were never required to be funded and to this point have not been funded. So let's just go back to the pension plan for a minute and, and think of it this way. We all, at least I know, I have a mortgage on my house. Ah, there we go. So we all have a mortgage on our homes likely. Um, if you look at the top section here, top section, not that one. Um, you had it for a second there, Joe. You had it for a second there George.
Randy, it's still up on our screen.
Oh, okay, great. Uh, so I will look at my piece of paper. Um, the top section is what is the funded status of the plan before the bond issuance? And what is the funded status of each plan after the bond issuance? Now this is, we're talking about pension, police and non-uniform. So you'll see there the accrued liability is the first line. And what the accrued liability is, it's the present value of the benefits that have been earned to date. They're not, it's not the present value of the benefits that will ever be earned in the future. So for a guy who has twenty out of thirty years, it's basically twenty out of thirty years of his pension benefit liability. For a guy who has five years, it's five thirtieths of his pension liability. So that's the liability you have to date. So for example, if we just focus on the police plan, you got twenty-five point two million dollars in accrued liability. That's sort of the mortgage. Let me stop again, that's the value of the house. Um, the market value of the assets is how much equity you have in the house. So you have twenty million dollars in equity. So that means you have five point two million dollars in unfunded accrued liability. That's the mortgage that you've been paying off, okay? If you borrow a bond that covered that five point one million dollars for the police plan only, you would now have twenty-five point two million dollars in assets and you'd be a hundred percent funded. So you're going from roughly eighty percent funded, which is great, we've been building, we've been growing, to a hundred percent funding immediately. Now, yes, we have bond debt to cover that. So you might say to yourself, okay, if we have debt in the pension plan of five point one million dollars, how does it help to borrow five point one million dollars in bonds to make the pension plan zero, but now we have a five point one million dollar debt somewhere else to repay the bonds? Let's go to the bottom of the sheet and this, this becomes sort of an interest rate arbitrage. So think of it as your pension liability, you have a mortgage for five point one million dollars that you're paying off at six percent or six and a half percent. It used to be eight percent. So you have eight percent mortgage payments or six percent mortgage payment. But now because bond rates are so low, three percent ish, now we're really converting that six percent mortgage to a three percent mortgage. So we're gonna make lower payments, we're saving money essentially by making the three percent payments instead of the six percent payments. I think we would all in a heartbeat transition or refinance our homes from a six, six and a half percent mortgage to a three percent mortgage. So if you look at the bottom section of the, that first exhibit under the police plan and I'm only focusing on police, but it applies to non-uniformed as well. This top part is just a development of the annual obligation the township has to contribute to the pension plan. So right now, without the bond, if we just skip down to the first section of that numbers in the bottom section, MMO without bond, your mortgage or your contributions to the plan are gonna be about a million, a million one six, a million one six. I'm sorry, did somebody ask a question?
No, no.
Okay, great. So that's what you would be expected to pay. If you borrow this five point one million dollars in bond money, now you're not gonna have a, a mortgage in twenty twenty-one of a million dollars. You're gonna have two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So from purely a pension perspective, you're saving seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in year one, four hundred and nineteen thousand in year two, four hundred and seventeen thousand in year three. I'm sorry. Backup. You're, you're saving seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two, and seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. Now, that's just the pension side. You are going to have to retire that five point one million dollars you borrow in bonds, but at three percent, not at six percent. So the payments aren't gonna be quite half, but you're gonna save a couple of hundred thousand dollars every year in the pension plan. And maybe fifty or so thousand dollars in the health plan. And we don't know what those numbers are yet because we don't know where the bonds are gonna land at. But in total, you can see on the right side, eight hundred thousand dollars a year. If you save, you know, three hundred thousand dollars a year, four hundred thousand dollars a year, that's a big saver. If I could just skip George, if you can go over to the OPEB plan for a minute. That's that second page of my display and tell me when it's up because I'm not seeing it.
It's all.
Okay, so that second page of the display is the commitment that the township has made to police officers and public work officers for post-retirement medical benefit. Now, these are a little different than pension. Under Act two oh five, those benefits are vested, under Act six hundred, you must provide them to police. You can't get out of that. These, you are committed to by a collective bargaining agreement, but this collective bargaining agreement has provided for post-medical retirements for a long time and it's unlikely that they're gonna go away. So we've never funded for them because you're not required to fund for them. But these are liabilities that show up on the township's financial statements that hurt the township's ability to borrow money and that kind of thing. So again, at the bottom, if you had been paying these liabilities off over a fifteen-year period, if you just skip to the bottom, that amortization cost, annual cost without bond, two point six million, two point seven million, two point seven million for the police, you can see now that it would turn into three hundred thousand dollars and you'd be saving about two point three million dollars a year. Again, you would have to retire that bond of twenty-four million dollars, but you're gaining an interest rate arbitrage, just like you would save if you're refinancing a mortgage on your house. Jim, do you have any additions to that?
Sure. Uh, hi everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, it's Jim Kennedy at Tom Anderson. Two things, I wanted to just loop back a little bit. We had had a very similar call to this last fall. And one of the things that we talked about was kind of the overall status of things and, and I wanted to congratulate both the board and the township for, for basically taking a lot of proactive actions over the last several years. And before the bond issue, I wanted to tell you that we do valuations, Randy does, every two years. And on the one one-nineteens, you were funded overall with your three plans at about seventy-five percent. And at one one-twenty-one, you were at eighty-one percent. But that eighty-one percent is also now at a significantly lower assumed interest rate, down from eight to six and a half, which Mike Blacken, who's in the audience, will tell you is a much more realistic investment return. And number two, we've also had, which is, is common and makes total sense to be proactive, people are living longer. So Randy has upped the mortality tables to new required public mortality tables so that you're funding the plans correctly. So even with those improvements, because of the investment returns that we've had over the last couple of years in nineteen and twenty, the funding ratios have improved, even though you've made those, and, and those are changes that add to liability in the plan. And a lot of this is due to the last several years, those returns, but also the board taking a view and George, where you've put in additional funds above the MMO so that you've been proactively staying on this problem. My hat is on the pension side, but the other thing I wanna share with all of you is that there are very few municipalities right now that are proactively funding for OPEB plans. As Randy said, they're not required. And the OPEB funding is basically the next tsunami wave that's coming in from municipalities where many of them are trying to ignore this and not fund things correctly and proactively. So by setting up a trust and doing this, you're putting a stake in the ground to do this correctly for years into the future, rather than try to treat it on a piecemeal annual basis, not doing it correctly. So all of these moves that you're making are very proactive, uh, conservative, good moves to keep the township's finances in good shape.
Is there any comment from the board?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, what was it? Mister, Mister Black.
Good evening, my name's Mike Blacken, president of CBIZ INR. Uh, we've had the privilege of being partnered with the township and managing the uh, pensions um, since uh, January of twenty nineteen. Uh, and as Jim said, um, if, if, if you were to, to kind of get on your soapbox as a township and say, what have we done right? I manage over a hundred and twenty-some municipal pension plans throughout the Commonwealth. Probably more than um, most managers across, across the Commonwealth. And out of those hundred and twenty-two, there's only a handful that are really gonna start to uh, fund that post-medical obligation. So instead of the, the, the famous term, kick the can down the street, you guys are being prudent in funding for a debt that you, you obviously have that other, others are pretending isn't, isn't there. And you're doing it at a time uh, where interest rates are at an all-time low. Um, so, so kind of piggyback on that. Um, George asked me to come and I ran the numbers uh, this morning for the second quarter. And the good news continues into twenty twenty-one. So in twenty twenty, both pension plans were up roughly sixteen percent following a, a roughly twenty percent return the year before for the entire year. Which means you're up roughly thirty-six percent when your original target assumed interest rate was eight percent a year or sixteen percent. So the really good news is, um, the funding level has come up quite a bit. Uh, so that market value has come up quite a bit. Uh, therefore you were able to lower the assumed interest rate and the funding level came up and then, and fixed the mortality table before you even go out and bondage. So what's happened is the, the market values run up, you could borrow less money, which is good news, and we could borrow a low interest rate. And, and the most positive thing is you're really gonna fund that big twenty-five million dollar obligation at an all-time low, okay? And what we're trying to do is over the long run, for as long as you're gonna have to pay for the medical for your folks and as long as you're gonna have police officers and, and a pension plan, uh, that's how long our time horizon is. So, so the goal is just beat rate of return that you're getting in the bonds over the long run. So like Randy said, we have an opportunity to go out and refinance at all-time low rates. And so year-to-date, you're up over nine percent so far. Um, and we were able to take advantage of some, some very cool things together on the pension committee, we meet. Um, you guys were funding uh, uh, um, additional funds as Jim said. Um, we were also rebalancing, so last year uh, in, in March, when George and Mike and Yuri and I got together and the market was down about forty percent, had a conversation uh, with, with Chairman Gaudio. So, well, market was down about forty percent, we went in, sold bonds and bought stocks at forty percent discount. We are constantly buying whatever asset class goes on sale, so we're always gonna be shoppers. So as a pension committee, as a township, no matter what happens in the marketplace over the next thirty years, we'll be buying whatever goes down, selling whatever's up, and we're keeping the allocation in check. So the last thing I'm gonna say is, um, what, what we're expecting to get over that long-term horizon is roughly six to six and a half percent. And, and as, as Mike said, we're, we're looking at, you know, somewhere around three percent bond. So that's the difference, to keep it simple. We're, we're targeting six and six and a half and you're using money as break. With that, I'll kind of close it for any questions before I finish our lead back.
No, I just wanna thank everybody that's involved with this. You know, this is something, I know I've pushed for a long time and I've always had the cooperation of the board and I just think this is gonna make us, our township, very, very solvent and it's gonna make the, the future easier to negotiate with some of the unions saying, we fully funded your future. And I appreciate everything that everybody's done, thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Um, my name's Mike Vind, uh, managing director of FSNL Public Finance, um, and your advisor on debt. Um, it's our job to help, we'll go through this process and then issue, issue the bonds uh, to fund these plans. Um, as Mike said and Joe said, George, we've been talking. Um, you are near or at all-time historic lows uh, in the interest rate market, both on a taxable and taxable basis, it's gonna be untaxable. Um, and right now, the, the uh, blended interest rate over the life is going to be, if you were to issue today, sub-three percent. Um, so we're hoping the market puts in. Uh, there is a, a, a several things if the commissioners decide to, to adopt the ordinance uh, to move forward that we need to do, we need to go through the offering documents, go through the rating process, go out and market the, the bonds to investors and then actually price. We're not gonna know the interest rates till we actually go out and price the bonds. So if the commissioners wanted to move ahead at their next meeting and, and vote on the ordinance, you'll be looking to lock in those rates sometime within the next thirty days. Um, that's, that's typically how long it, it takes. And then we'll close approximately thirty days after that. So once those rates are locked, even though you are closed, you're gonna know exactly what your cost is going to be, it's not gonna change. It doesn't matter if the market goes up or down from then, but uh, we're looking to get out as quickly as possible if the commissioners decide to move forward to take.
I like to stand, excuse me. Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Tim Horstman, uh, your bond counsel, I'm an attorney with McNeese Walls, Eric in Harrisburg. A bit of a drive for me tonight, but uh, I actually grew up in Downingtown and I have a family that lives nearby, so it's nice to be back in the area. Um, as your other advisors have indicated, we prepared a draft ordinance uh, for presentation tonight uh, for consideration next week. A first legal notice ran uh, in the paper today. Uh, the notice uh, to the ordinance, what we would call parameters ordinance. And the idea of a parameters ordinance is basically to give you the flexibility to go out to the market on the best suits the township. So we're gonna enact an ordinance that basically says, we're, we're gonna sell bonds for these purposes and only these purposes, being the funding of the, of these pension plans and the OPEB plan. Um, but we're gonna do that at the time that's best, best suited for the township to maximize the interest rate savings that we're talking about. So the ordinance, the ordinance indicates a, a maximum aggregate principal amount of bonds, forty-five million. You're not gonna issue forty-five million dollars of bonds. The reason for that uh, higher number than what you're gonna issue is because the way these, the way these ordinances work, uh, you wanna give seller of the bonds, your underwriter, the flexibility to price bonds in each maturity at different amounts. So when we draft the ordinance, the amounts have to be a lot higher. You see in the, in each maturity year, the, the amounts will be, you know, much higher than what we typically see in an actual pricing. And that's done again, just to give that underwriter flexibility so that if they need to go higher in one year, they can do that and then in, in another year, it can, it can of course be lower. The ultimate goal being to price bonds, maximize the savings to the township in a way that's most financially beneficial. I'll just go briefly through the ordinance, it's a lot of, a lot of legal, legal dogma to go here, so I won't, you know, bore you too much with it, but it is a technical term, I think, I think it's in the local government unit data. But this order, the reason for the, this ordinance again is uh, you have, when you issue bonds in the Commonwealth, you have to get state approval before you can, before you can sell the bonds. So the ordinance is crafted with that in mind, it's using a form that has passed muster at the Department of Community Economic Development. So the ordinance uh, can authorize the issuance of the bonds, which are general obligation bonds, meaning that you are promising to pay those bonds with your tax revenues. If you need to raise taxes to pay those bonds, you're promising the holders of those bonds that you will raise taxes to do that. So that's one important thing to keep in mind, these are federally taxable bonds, oftentimes bonds can be tax exempt. Here because they're, are gonna be issued for a pension funding proposal, they wouldn't have to be issued as federally taxable. The ordinance again, authorizes the scale of the bonds at the time that's best suited for the township, basically input of your advisors. Uh, and once those bonds are sold, uh, you then authorize the execution of any and all documents that would be required to close on the bond deal. Um, you've heard about the timeline tonight, again, we're hoping to get this closed by September. Um, but if there are any questions for the board, I'm also happy to answer questions.
I did have one more question, the thirty-day period, um, is there any way to predict any type of rates that we could possibly get? get?
There's really no way to predict exactly where rates are going to be, obviously. However, I can tell you that over the past several months, even with inflationary data that's come out, which tends to drive increased rates, the rates have actually stayed very steady. There's been a lot of inflows to municipal bond funds, which are the biggest buyers of these funds, which only helps drive demand, which lowers your borrowing costs as a seller of these instruments. Unless something drastic happens in the next 30 days, I think what you're seeing from our estimates here, being at 3% or a little bit below, is probably going to come to fruition. And obviously, we would keep the Township, you know, for George, abreast of any major movements between now and when we actually press those bonds.
I'm very excited to do this. I guess worst-case scenario, you know, 30 days, something drastic happens that would not be as beneficial to us to keep the bonds. Is there any cause in there to get out?
I mean, obviously, if something, you know, meaningful happens, we will keep, you know, keep your administration and George abreast, and I'm sure that then we've talked to the Board of Commissioners, and if there needs to be reevaluation, then there'd be reevaluation. Just because you adopt the ordinance doesn't mean, you know, something drastic happens. We're not going to go ahead without any of this knowledge. I mean, we're all going to be kept very transparent of the process, what's going on, and if something needs, if we need to get together because something has happened that's going to negatively impact the analysis for, you know, the savings amount, we would definitely like, you know.
Thank you.
But at a certain point, once we commit, we'll get a locked-in rate.
Correct. Assuming that the Commissioners adopt the ordinance next week, we're going to start right away on getting everything. Tim said he's got to file the proceedings with the state to get approval. We're going to start grading. We've already started, you know, the preliminary process of the offering documents, just waiting for approval because we don't want to get too far ahead. But as soon as you adopt that, we're going to move full steam ahead to get those rates locked in as quickly as possible.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to move on. And again, as Mr. Neary said, we thank everybody that participated in this. We think it's a benefit for the Township, and we're looking forward to working with you. A special thank you all. Have a great fourth.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Michael C. also for working with us. All right, we have one more presentation tonight. It's 820 Columbia Avenue. So I'd like to thank you for your patience, and the time is yours.
I think it looks active is better on it. Yeah, that's fine. Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. My name is Charles Carrot. I work with Stan Tech. I worked with Chuck Olivero and John Grant, and I mean Nelson, some people you may know. Thank you, Mr. Catania, for having me, and thanks for getting things set up. I'm a land surveyor at Stan Tech, and we have a project here. The project, as you know, is located at the corner of I-95 and Blue Ball Avenue, southeast corner. Township line cuts through the project. It's a 15-acre parcel, and you may know that the TNT fireworks are located on that site. The 15-acre parcel, they wish to cut approximately in half or more. Six and a half acres are going to go to the retail operation, and we've got about eight and a half acres remaining on the left. The owner is anxious to split the property and find a buyer. I am not aware of the development plans at this time. We met, or we presented in April towards, for the Planning Commission. We had some comments from Catania Engineering. Number one was to, these wetlands that are shown on this plan, these wetlands were from 2006. I believe the development was done in around 2008. One of the comments was to redelineate the wetlands, which were done. And they're more or less in the same location, but we wanted to make sure that was valid. Also, the proposed, the stormwater coming off of the parking lot actually makes its way down to an infiltration basin down here in this proposed lot, too, which is actually in Lower Chichester Township. But based on the recommendation from Catania, we did expand the area for this proposed drainage basin, so we could make sure that maintenance could be done properly. The latest letter we got from Catania dated June 29th was, one of the sticking points is the fee in lieu of standby. Yeah, the applicant is requesting a waiver for Section 50531 for the recreation and open space fee in lieu. Their position is this area in Upper Chichester Township is, if it's not in wetlands, it's in a wetlands buffer. Roughly 90% of the land in Upper Chichester Township is either wetlands or wetlands buffer. There's no development there, so they're putting up some resistance to that ordinance for the fee for the recreation and open space. Since it is undeveloped and open space already, they're saying, why not just call it open space except for that? The other issue on the June 29th letter was, had to do with the wetlands. So we got the, the wetlands delineation was done by R.K. out of Wilmington, and we got a letter of certification that the plan that we showed now, which is on the floor there, they certified that we have delineated the wetlands as per their, as per their process back in May. So that was redelineated in May, and the plan was reissued in June. There's one more issue, and that has to do with the original markup at this plan. Had some erroneous data in the area table, and I apologize for that, but apparently, we've identified that there's an area of Blue Ball Avenue along the frontage of your project in Upper Chichester Township. We may not, or the Township may not have received, or Pendott has not actually taken dedication of that strip of land. So the Township at this time is prevailing on us to find out from Pendott, has that been dedicated? And if not, we have to take steps towards getting that, getting that land dedicated to Pendott. And I've been having trouble getting through to Pendott. I don't know if, Lisa, we had a conversation yesterday. I did hear from Pendott today asking for more information, so I know wheels are moving, but I still don't have an answer on that issue at this time.
Is that portion in Upper Chichester, the piece that you're wanting to answer from Pendott from?
I noticed this project's split between Upper Chi and Lower Chi, correct? Right. Right, so the portion that you're talking about, is that an Upper Chichester? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Just as an FYI, the dedication, the offer of dedication is actually done by the developer to Pendott. So there's paperwork that needs to get to Pendott in order for them to verify or to accept. They also have the right to reject an offer of dedication. Asking for is that they verify either it has been dedicated or Pendott has requested or has rejected the offer.
Why does it have to be dedicated to Pendott? I mean, I'm just saying, how big is the lot or land that you're talking along Blue Ball Avenue?
Pendott's territory.
But I mean, is this something that Pendott requires?
This is actually from the original plan that was supposed to be completed. It was on this plan, so we're asking that we verify that it happened. The reason, if I recall correctly, the reason is that you're going to a specific right-of-way with that's required, it didn't need at the time, and with this dedication, you need to require.
The wetlands, how much ground is that out of the? Well, first of all, it's a reverse subdivision. You're splitting the lots in half, am I right? You're splitting the lot in half, basically? The part that's in Upper Chi that's a wetland, how much is that of the acreage that's?
That is about three acres, 124,000 square feet, is wetlands. Now, that's the total. In Upper Chi, there's a little bit that bumps down in here and in Lower Chi. Yeah, it's about three acres wetland. This remaining lot, we're declaring it is about eight acres, but you're losing close to three or four between the wetlands and the buffer.
There's nothing there.
This eight-acre lot is going to lose almost half of between these wetlands, the wetlands and the buffer, and the proposed drainage unit area. There's really only about four acres left that's developed.
In Lower Chichester, right?
And, well, on this, in Lower Chichester.
Thank you.
I think they'll take the risk for a fee, I mean, a waiver for the fee in lieu of. Was there any monetary value that was determined, or what that was?
I didn't, but I know that there was an email that said that they would offer the open space area to be dedicated to the Township, but it necessarily meets the ordinance. Quite frankly, from an engineering development standpoint, should they decide to do that, they're really reducing what they're able to do in that four acres that are allowable, because you can use that three acres as percentage of your previous coverage to try to raise that number up in the front. If that makes any sense.
Yeah.
So it's their advantage to have that open space, that wetland area.
Yep. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that you're going to, if the property's going to be subdivided, well, it's already basically, I mean, it's one big lot, but part Lower Chi, part Upper Chi, it still counts because part they need for the storm going into that wetland area is, I mean, even though it's going into another township?
The property is actually going to be, even the lot that they are creating, of this whole lot, the lot that will be developable is also in Lower Chi and Upper Chi.
Okay, so the line I'm looking at then is just the boundary line.
Here's, I'm going to go down.
Okay, okay. I'm looking at the border line township.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I understand it now. Right.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was looking at, too. Okay, makes sense.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming out tonight and all this, everything I did regarding the laws of Commissioners. Thank you. With that said, we'll move on to our regular meeting, and we'll start with our Engineers' Report with Lisa Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a copy of my report. I think everyone has noticed that the Wawa Building is supported by the Foundation on adding the tanks. We've got, we have an USF release. I received. At this. That I have that. The Chichester Avenue Streetscape is moving forward. I have one invoice action on. There are actually two invoices for the project, and an invoice is for the little grant, so the amount of $54,100. Autozone is working. It seems rather slowly these days. If you notice, there is a new traffic signal. That's a. At this point. Waiting for that to happen. They have, they have not at this point started. I have not heard from. Not even hearing from.
My concern is for the people that had damage to their properties. Do they need to go to his insurance company, or can we repair it through the money that we have? Okay, could you send me an email with that process tomorrow so that I can give it to the homeowners so that they can proceed? Thank you.
The Willowbrook Clubhouse, I received word yesterday that they feel that they have been working through Southern Delaware Air Punch List, pay a fact. So some of our punch lists. At next week as well. That project moves down. With Alliance, have two different properties. I have Alliance before. A-20 Columbia, we've talked about community development projects for 2019. We're waiting on some information. We've gotten proposals. Eyes, I see resident in the audience about Locust Street. And send, I think, appropriate for this particular property, but I also looked at it from the standpoint of how, for at least a short term, you put cobblestones in along the cartway. I do have, Putt has that memo. I don't know how we're going to add at this point. I have three alternatives that. Quite frankly, one, the last one is obviously the most. Piping it down. I have, I have some. Go through that. I don't know. At the next public. Let's have that, so he may, he may go ahead and.
Believe he's going to give you a call tomorrow and just to check to see what can be done right away.
And I do have on my agenda to have authorization for water projects. Free Peach Street project, like to get authorization to that project. Greenwood Avenue Drake Beach project. I'd like to get that authorized for bid. And the 2021 road program, we are expecting that Damon, Damon is in Aston. They expect to be in Aston. Probably for the next three. He is expecting to be here by mid-August end of.
The contracts have been signed.
That's all I have.
Any questions for our township engineer?
I actually have one. With the Peach Street, Plum Street area, have we gotten the easements? Do you know, George, because I, I know we went out to bid on Ryan's run and we were held up because we didn't get an easement. So do we need to get them first?
Yeah, I'll have to check with Putt and G. Marie to see what we've got together because I believe we have the, we have SDCA.
We have SDCA, we do not have Mrs. Troy at this point. And because we extended.
Correct.
That one area, we actually had two additional. Phil Neal from my office, my surveyor, is putting together the documentation now.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, she was holding up because she knew the other two hadn't gotten anything. She called me and told me, she says, I'm holding up because I know Rich and I think Mr. Hart's.
That work is going to require any.
So, yeah.
The easements that I'm requiring to are actually.
Further, oh, yeah, okay. Okay. The property through.
Right, so we've got to get both of those properties.
Okay, thank you very much.
Talked about that at Public Works.
Yeah, so at the most recent Public Works meeting, we went through a laundry list of about 25 stormwater projects that range from emergency repairs needed down to, you know, wish list projects. And we tried to put them in an order of talking about with, with the Public Works Department, the engineer, what would be the next step that was needed to happen? The Public Works Department is going to vet that list, clean it up and get that out to everybody to take a look at. Most of the items on there are either, again, like we'll need survey work or, you know, we'll need easements. Some of them were emergency repairs that the department can do. They've already actually went out and completed a couple of them. So, so when we get that list, I think it's worth talking as a group as to kind of how you want to go about authorizing these things to happen. Is there going to be like latitude to say to the engineer, get the surveys done of the emergency work and just get it done so that, you know, these things can keep moving along? Or is this something we want to come to every meeting with the list and get various approvals based off of what's going on? So unfortunately, that list is not out like vet and completed yet, but we will get it, I'll get it to you this week before the next meeting to discuss a little bit.
Is most of the work going to be done by our guys?
It's like a very, it's wide range, it's a wide range of jobs. It's like we had an emergency, you know, we had an area that flushed out in someone's backyard that's a very massive job that's going to be difficult that they evaluated and they said they can't do, but it also goes down to they have on there, this is an inlet repair and we're going to knock this out in August. It's that full gap. Obviously, we don't want to get involved in these large, I don't want to say we don't want to get involved. I don't want us to unilaterally be at that meeting and say, start to do all this work on this large 900,000 million dollar project that we don't know if we're going to be able to fund yet. But these emergency repairs on these smaller things, I think we do need some kind of ability to just kind of knock them out and get them done.
Example being like on Bernard Street, resident called me because there was a hole in the front street and it was sinking in. That's what it was. So, yeah, something like that, they want to be able to do, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so some of that work needs like a survey or some of it needs a design. So the question is going to be, can we, you know, can we ask, just say, this is emergency repair, we need a design, can we just get it done?
Well, if there's something already there, why would we need a design?
I'll give you an example. We have, we have a situation of a sinkhole and it's actually because of the sinkhole, we're undermining some of the other. We went down, we took a look, we found what the issue was, we gave Putt a fix for it so that we can do this immediately. And then he's going to actually, once he finishes that, he's going to video the line, we'll see whether there's anything permanent.
So it's not a design, design, you're just giving the recommendations that four guys could do, yeah.
Most of the time, it's not a design.
Right, I understand.
Sometimes it's, it's, he's got sections of pipe, for example, and falling into the creek. I end wall on it.
Right.
I have to design, this is, take this section off, this is the elevation and this is the brick block. So we have to do some design work because there's actually formulas that we need to do.
Right.
Those types of things.
I have a question. Regarding Ferncroft. What's the status of that? That's the one you're talking about? Okay, that's what I thought, okay. It popped in, it popped in my head, so, okay, all right, perfect. And then the follow up on Douglas Avenue. So you're going to send me the list of items that are incomplete on that by Tuesday?
Send you my punch list, I'm going to send you Phil's punch list. Which is the, that is, that is UCC. Unregulated, that's not anything that we can read that that's necessary. And I'm also going to. Be later next week if I can find community development block grants that I have for 1979 to 1982.
Yeah.
Just so, because as I'm reading what's here. It's not designating specific streets and it certainly isn't all of the streets. For $50,000 two years.
Right.
So we do need some clarification on this as well because previously this, the lawyer for Mr. Smith had asked that the board proceed forward with obtaining quotes to finish the work and use the escrow. And that was, Catania Engineering was authorized by the board to do that. However, today's request is much different than that request. So we, should we be proceeding forward with that work? Should this be something, hold off on that work at this point until?
Right.
Sounds good, thank you.
And then the, then the occupancy? Okay, and then George, what was the purpose of you driving by there?
Mr. Smith had given me a list and stated that he was, that we were requesting that the road be completed 16 feet past the property line.
Okay.
So I wanted to see where the property line was. So based off of the plan, I was seeing that the driveway was not the end of the property line and the extension of the roadway was 16 feet past the driveway to the property line. So I wanted to see what it looked like in real life.
Got it, okay.
Did we ever get any final prices utilizing the escrow account to put it past the street in?
Right, that's what they're working on, so I'll do both.
Yeah, and I think in conjunction with the UCC, so it'll need a life safety inspection from Charles or Mally so we can coordinate those two.
Thank you.
I have a couple, just a couple, I almost forgot them. Can we take a look at all the traffic lights at Chichester Meeting House Road? There's like 50 million of them up now. And the one issue I have is, and I'm shocked we don't have an accident. There's a bit, there's one now at Bethel Mill, so, but when you're going towards I-95, and I think it's northbound, north, south, whatever, there's a new light up there for the turn and I would make a left and it's covered.
Right.
But you can still see it. And when it turns green, guess what? The other people coming this way have a green light too. So they either shut that thing off or.
Yeah, I was there the other day.
I think we got, somebody paid way too many lights out there for us.
Well, they're going to move, they're going to, they're replacing them, but it is true, there's like a film over it. And I didn't go, like I, I didn't real, I had the, I was at the red and the car behind me blew because the other light was green and I didn't even realize it. So it is kind of, you can see both, it's on, you can see both. Right.
And when that does go green, the new, the longer one.
Yeah.
The other side ends up getting green and everybody's going at the same time. It's like, what? So if we could take a peek one day, to me, there's too many lights on there.
Well, they're mov, they're moving them.
Where?
Right, because they're right on top of each other, but still, but the other one is the old antique. It's the antique style one, so they're putting in the new, the newer light and taking out the old one is what I surmise, but it's still accident prone, yeah. Yeah, we're not, they're not leaving them all up there.
That's what I'm saying, there's a lot there.
Things up because when we get cameras back up. You know, cameras.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
They've got everything up in mind. You're right. One day. Tuesday, yes, down, but there you go.
And then, and the other thing, when everything is said and done with the lights, can we make sure we have 13 seconds on the turnin lanes? Because again, right now, they're up and they're going. When that second car moves into the intersection, it's changed again. And that's what I fought for forever. And it took like two studies to get it up to 13 seconds and now we're down to two cars again.
Yeah, I can't answer what the timing of that light goes through.
There should be a study because I went back and forth with the guy back in the day.
Well, that's back in the day. I'm talking today with, with the new study, I have to look and see what they are.
Okay, thank you.
I'm your manager. Solicitor, sorry.
Forget you.
Any questions for our solicitor?
Mike, the Warner property.
Yes.
I'm reading your notes here and you recommended issuing a permit for.
For the garage, yes. I think that is, there was a request for a portion of the garage on the property. Indicated to be. This is a scenario that need its movement on the property, I don't think it's. Assuming that it is in compliance with all other aspects, in other words, the zoning setbacks, those types of things. That as part of cleanup of property, it's going to be. So we're, you know, we don't want to sit back on circumstances and say, punish your permit and then have them come to court and say, we tried to get the permit, we tried to get the garage, we weren't compliant, but they only issued us the permit. So we're kind of in a, in a catch 22. So my recommendation was to check with Charlie and with all the other officers and make sure that everything was in compliance for that property request for the garage. And if it was to issue the permit to get some movement, as I understand it, they have made some progress in cleaning up the property. So that's what I'm hopeful with this is that.
So he has to submit drawings and plans with the garage?
They have, they already have.
They already have?
They have.
Okay, so has anybody been out to check it as far as from?
I just dealt with. Her question was, can we issue a permit? My answer to her was, we, that according to statutes of property improvement, that we could not withhold permits assuming that everything else was in compliance, just for payment for fines and violations that's been in statute.
Okay.
It's, it's still very early in the application status.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If there's no other questions for our solicitor, we'll move on to our manager's report.
Good evening, everybody. The first item I have that you have is Penn Dots requesting another agreement, maintenance agreement with the township. This one is a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. Typically, they require maintenance of the township and they're giving us some responsibility to something that they are constructing. This is for their CCTV system. This is what they use to like monitor traffic, you can see it on their website, they do weather, all that kind of stuff, all of it. Our obligation under this is to maintain traffic signals at the various intersections. They do the maintenance of the cameras and all that stuff. So that is in there for next week for consideration. The tax collector has submitted a list of real estate tax refunds that they are requesting that the Board of Commissioners act upon. American Recovery Funds Act update, we have submitted our application, we are awaiting our funds. I followed up today to determine, to get an update of the status of where those funds are, as I've heard some municipalities in Chester County have received their funds already. As of this morning, it was not in the Plaguehead Bank account. Nicole, under other, Nicole, you have a handy, temporary handicap parking spot request that was recommended by the chief of police and there's a memo for that. And then also, I did not see it in the binder, so I'm going to get it from Brian and send it out. But we've gotten quotes to install camera systems in the parking, in the parks. We went with the Plate Logic Company, that's the company that is doing the system for the police department at the intersections. The reason we did that was twofold, their technology that they have does certain things, like so for instance, they're heat sensitive. So if individuals are in the parks after dusk, the, the police officers can get, set it up so that they're dinged. So they will be able to tell if people are in the parks after they're closed. So they will be able to tell if people are in the parks after they're closed. The other thing is, obviously, they include the same technology that we currently have, so they can import them into the license plate reading technology. So in the event that a crime does happen and there's a vehicle there, they'll be able to do the same thing that they do with our system. It's, it's, they're roughly about twelve thousand dollars apiece for the infrastructure initially to go in. The other thing is, they will use a First Net card instead of going with Comcast, so actually will be significantly cheaper on a month-to-month basis than we're currently paying for intersections. And we'll be transitioning to that technology over the next two years to save some money. As a note, we went to Kingsman Park the other day, and someone had already chipped out a large portion of the chessboard from the table that's there. So I think that these cameras are absolutely warranted, and we need to get them up as soon as possible. My suggestion would be that we look at it as a capital expenditure. However, Brian has been ahead of all of his targets so far for revenue for this year, so that we, there is a, realistically, we could take it out of his, just, his, his general rec fund budget. He could pay for them out of that, and then he would most likely still hit, because his revenues are so high for the year.
Questions for our council manager? No.
So we did receive some complaints that the chessboard was directed in the wrong direction. It is an ADA accessible table, and it is oriented so that the individuals who would not be sitting at the, at the two tables are, would be able to play, so.
Questions for our ma, for our manager? I'd now move on to our commissioner's report, and start off with our vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Baca.
Uh, I wanted to reach out to the board. At this point, not being able to hire any part-time help yet. I, I, me and George were talking, I talked to a putt. It probably should maybe just bag it now, we're getting through it. But in lieu of that, maybe, they're, they're trying to, you know, prioritize projects and stuff, weeks tonight, recycling. Maybe here or there, if they need to work a Saturday to, to keep on track, you know, that, that they can go ahead and do it.
For grass cutting?
For whatever, whatever.
Yeah, in general, they've been keeping up with the workload, but we do see that there, it has happened in the past when, when we've been a little short-staffed. We get a project that requires some weekend work. Uh, when you, in looking at the budget and our current status, with some of the employment moves that were made in those departments, there is a cushion. So that if we do need to utilize additional overtime, we can support that.
But we, we've spent nothing in the part-time help.
I was gonna say, are we going, is there a certain dollar amount that we're going to not exceed in terms of overtime?
I don't think we can put a certain dollar amount on it at this point, but like, it'll, everything will have to be authorized. So when, if Jim says, George, I have a job and I need four people on it, we're gonna look at it and say, is this absolutely necessary?
And we'll email the whole board, we'll tell them if we don't. We're not just gonna do it blind.
No, no, I'm just asking.
Everybody will get a heads up.
Yeah, but the number would be somewhere around what we spent for five people part-time for all season. I mean, you gotta budget that somewhere.
Yeah, uh, so we don't expect to get anywhere near that from, from what we're looking for this. This would be, this would be talking more of like, something pops up and we say, you have to. I just can't give you a, a figure off the top of my head, but we budgeted, I believe, in highway for twenty-five thousand dollars for part-time help this summer.
Right, that's what I was thinking, okay, that's fine.
And it's only gonna be like, yeah, it's not, we're not trying to settle up for every Saturday, I think. Just if needed.
Right.
Yeah.
No Sunday.
We already decided that, no Sundays.
We're okay to proceed with that, we don't need to, it's just a procedural thing, so I'll just tell them that tomorrow.
And, um, that's all I have about highway and all, I, I don't want to go too long. Uh, but I, I just got a question, um, George's been working with me on, we, we have a little issue over on Tansy where possibly there was an illegal sewer tie-in or something that we, we just, it's new, we're digging in now, but I, I think at some point, we're gonna have to bring Mike in, probably. I talked to Rich, to, I talked to one of the guys on the board today, this, this all just happened in the last two days.
Yeah, I received the documents, they actually reviewed them before the meeting. I think the best perceived process to go forward would be to get Mike, Siaco, Lisa, and Bill Gagnon's mentioned, and a couple of them from a building problem on there, so get three of you guys together with Mike and maybe the solicitor for the STCA, and kind of see what the path forward would be. I believe that we can rule some things out by just speaking to the sewer authority and see, having them check some.
You, you contact one, you're probably better off contacting him than Martin. That's all I have.
Any questions for our vice chair? Now we'll move on to Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, so, um, just real briefly, the Heart and Soul had, has held two meetings. The first session, the first summit was at Boothwin. Boothwin Fire Company, a hall that was well-attended. There was between a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty guests. Andrew did an excellent job on taking comments from attendees and putting together a video that you may have already seen, if not, we'll make sure that gets out. Session two was held at the community center, um, yes, Wednesday afternoon. And, um, was it Wednesday? Tuesday, Tuesday, Tuesday evening, and, um, that was partnered with the library. The library had a magic show there that was well-attended. Families came out, brought their children out for that. So that was a partnership event that also was attended by approximately a hundred people for that event. The surveys were completed, and I want to thank everyone for coming out, for everyone participating and completing their surveys. The Heart and Soul has been extended through June of twenty twenty-two. The grant has been extended, just to give everybody a heads up on that. And as the board selected the, oh, what is it, the Recreation Open Space Grant, the planner for that. And Walmart, five thousand dollar grant for officer training was awarded, and the work has been completed. Those are some updates there. Regarding the library, the library is having its, um, they're bringing back the annual crab feast. Uh, it's going to be held on Saturday, August the eighth, from one to four, and that's gonna be at Bethel. Bethel Fire Company, the ballroom's at Bethel. There was some discussion as to why I was at Bethel and, and not in Upper Chine. I now address that, and, and simply stating that they gave us a, a better rate. One year, when the event was held at Reliance, the crabs weren't hot, right, so they had to transfer them from the same location to Reliance. And there was not a lot of good feedback on that, so they said they didn't want to do that again. So that's why it's being, now their crabs are made there, they come out hot, and so, um, they also give us a good rate. So tickets for that event are fifty-five dollars. We're encouraging everyone to support the library's fundraiser for this. In addition, these beautiful flags that you see here are also a library fundraiser. They are twenty-five dollars each, if you would like to buy one. We're gonna run this fundraiser through Labor Day. So if you would like one, please, um, send me a text message, email, just reach out, and I will make sure that you get one.
I think you already did that.
I did, well, the board, this is for everybody else, right? So spread the word, the board, I gave you all one. It looks good, we're uniform, we have to give Mike and Lisa theirs for their, for their seating areas.
Defying give there.
This solicitor gave us twenty-five dollars.
For twenty-five, for a twenty-five dollar donation, act, exactly, exactly. Let's see, what else? Recreation, I will have an update regarding some requests that we received from the community regarding recreation throughout, throughout the township. There's been a lot with recreation, so we had our first movie night at Johnson Park last Friday, it was well-attended. The, I believe it's the girls' softball team, we allowed them to do fundraisers, so they sold popcorn and snacks and water ice, so they sold all those, um, those items to the public, again, it was well-attended. They played Rhea and the Last Dragon, it was a beautiful, nice, cool night, it wasn't hot, so. Got a lot of good feedback from that. We also held the same weekend, that Sunday, we had the three-on-three competition at the park in Twin Oaks. And that was really well-attended, and so one of the volunteers is my cousin, Aisha Hinson. So it was her idea, and then my family came out and gave water, they cooked, they grilled hot dogs. And just gave the, those items out to the, to the attendees and people that came out to watch, so it was really, a really good event. Uh, and that was just to kind of boost morale. We've been having some issues with trash and just the kids not taking care of the park, so we, the registration for that event was come out, clean up, and that's gonna be your registration fee. So we did that, we also painted the lines, refreshed the lines at the, um, park. And, um, we've talked about making some improvements, small improvements, um, until we come out with a plan, like a park plan, to see how we could redesign it to, um, to separate the older kids from the little, from the smaller children, the families that come out with their kids, because, you know, the language differences and just trying to separate the ages. So we looked at, and I think Brian Sidel did a plan for us, it looks really nice. So that's something that we'll be looking at for the future, but again, the event was well-attended. The, the summer concert series started, uh, it was here on the seventeenth, was it June? Father's Day, yes, last Sunday, June twentieth. Um, that was, um, that went over well as well, they did a fifty-fifty. On the residents, obviously won that, the next one is July seventeenth, and the third one is going to be, uh, August the twenty-first. All those, um, all that information is on the township's website and Facebook page. So please make sure you share that, share that information. I think that's all that I have regarding, um, so, oh, summer camp, it does, oh, how many students do we have? Okay, so that was a big jump, so forty-two students, up from the last time, which was eight. Um, and it starts on, um, Monday, Tuesday, July, huh? Right, okay, July fifth.
Six.
What's Monday?
The fifth.
Oh, the Fourth of July, yes, okay. Okay, Tuesday, that's what I thought, Tuesday, okay, July sixth, got it. All right, and then, oh, with that, the library also received a STEM grant, right? So the camp is gonna be working with the library, so they'll have an education component for the children as well. So they have a full schedule of, of events for that, so, um, it should be, should be good stuff.
Thank you. Any questions for, for our manager?
We have fireworks this year?
We're, 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 we're talking about it.
I was asked today.
So Community Day is going to be on October the ninth? It's homecoming weekend, so we're gonna partner with the school. So we typically don't have fireworks for Fourth of July. We had them on Labor Day, which was our, which was our community day. But since we are moving it to July, we are discussing having something, um, having some sort of fireworks that day. So I'm not sure, but we're discussing it.
We usually don't Labor Day though, that's.
Right.
We usually don't Labor Day.
Right.
You're talking about this week? It'll be everywhere.
Yeah, I know.
Right, so Labor Day, the, the issue that we were having there is that over the past, you know, few years, it was declining in terms of participation in the parade and, um, attendance, because people, that's the last weekend, people are at the beach, they're away, they're on vacation. So we try to pick a day, try to pick a time where people are home. So if we did do fireworks on Labor Day, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna, we need to talk about it.
But, that's why I didn't have an answer.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind fireworks on Labor Day, but.
Yeah.
Consider maybe still just doing fireworks, you know, outside there.
Right.
All right, well, any other questions, we will, we'll move on to Commissioner Ed Rickowski.
Thank you. Reports will be on file, the emergency management is on file tonight. There is no meeting in July and August for them, they resume September thirteenth. They did attend the Heart and Soul. Uh, they're almost on the business list with the contact information. It's just about done, and, uh, as I said, hopefully it's nice and quiet during July and August for them. Resume on September thirteenth. All other files will be, or reports will be for next week. I do want to echo back on what Nicole said just a little while ago. June seventeenth, we had that joint, uh, Boothwin Town Center Vision Plan and the Heart and Soul. And I would give a kudos out to everybody. The, um, task force for the Boothwin Town Center, the Heart and Soul people, everybody, um, it was surprisingly, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty people, like she said, uh, very well-taken. The energy of the residents, uh, good and bad, um, but and as Andrew did his part with the videos, everything came out pretty well with everybody, so. Our full report, um, it's on, on the back one for the deliverables, uh, on the other report that we have in the commissioners', uh, folders tonight. But like I said, I want to give a kudos out to, to the Boothwin Task Force, because they, they were just as excited as the residents being there and being able to show them the vision of what they would like to see the town, downtown center look like, so. I thank everybody that was there, and other than that, that would do it.
Any questions for Commissioner Rickowski? We'll move on to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, all the reports will be available next week. I would like to urge any residents who are watching to be very careful. Uh, fireworks are illegal, um, in terms of personal use in residential neighborhoods, and I, I urge everybody to be very careful if they use them, and hopefully, people will cease and desist, because they are very dangerous. That's all.
Thank you, any questions for Commissioner Neary? Now we'll wrap, we'll wrap up with my report, I'll keep it very brief. Forty-eight eighty-one Chester Avenue Land Development, I believe that's the hotel that's going in front of the planning board at the end of the month. Uh, we had eight hundred twenty Columbia Avenue come in tonight, the board will have to act on that next week, for approval or denial. Uh, Larry Jackson, the subdivision, that's still, um, in the extension stage. I signed the extension letter, so we'll wait back to see if we get anything from Mr. Jackson. And the Duncan Dunnetts is on an extension also. All that I have for tonight, so any questions for me?
Just, just a discussion for the eight twenty Columbia, I mean, what's, we're gonna be voting on it next week, what's to concern, um, wetland over there, it's, it's, nothing gonna be built on it. We're asking a fee in lieu of open space. And then my question is, if it's dedicated as open space to the township, are we responsible for it? That's what I mean, that's why I want to make sure, I, no, we, we haven't discussed this, we're gonna wait till next week.
Right, so, I mean, for him to dedicate it to us, I mean, we would not do that, that'd be out of common sense. I think we should talk to Brian about the fee in lieu of, because this, this would go directly to his rec fund, correct? I choose the way that, I like to know what the monetary value is, and the, the, the amount is before we make any decision.
Uh, yeah, so the requirement is for dedication of open space for recreational purposes, uh, as Liz Catania indicated. They're wetlands, so you're not, you're not gonna be able to get a dedication of actual space, so then it would default to the fee in lieu. So the fee in lieu is used for, uh, capital improvements or maintenance of a recreational asset accessible by the property. In that area, the most accessible park would be the Johnson Avenue Playground Park, um, in an area of the town that we are looking to complete improvements in, and kind of help that neighborhood lift up. My assumption is that you're going to get some kind of development eventually on that front parcel. If it's anything like the development across the street, they're going to come out of, all the car traffic would come out of Columbia and utilize an area that's in the township, so you, so the, I guess the argument would be that you're not going to get any public improvements out of this, or out of the eventual development. or out of the eventual development that happens, but you will get the, you will have, it will have an effect.
Correct, so I would not be in favor of waiting that.
Question though, isn't the fee in lieu based on the value of the project or isn't? Ain't that, have we figured it out?
Yeah, there's, there's some language in the, in the, the fee ordinance as to, you know, if it's a commercial development or residential development. The commercial says disturbed acreage, so you know, maybe that needs to be something.
Right. They're not building nothing, they're not even charging.
I guess the question is if they cannot comply with the requirement by law to feed open space based off of that. And, and the fee in lieu, I think it says, you know, that that needs to be something maybe that you discuss with the lawyers and interpretation.
So the fee in lieu would just be based on the area that, that is usable? Yeah, it's based on the area that is disturbed.
Upper Chi, yeah.
Okay. Best majority of that project is. So it may. Less, less than an acre then? Okay, so it's minimal.
Either way, it's not going to be a significant dollar amount comparative to what type of project would go in there.
Right, so it shouldn't be a burden.
Yeah, that's what I want to know. It sounds like it's minimal.
Yeah, but every minimal would help that Johnson Park or that area, it doesn't have to be in Columbia.
Right, no, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not going to be a financial burden to them if we deny it, right? Because it's going to be minimal cost. So I did forget to announce a couple of things, Flags for Heroes for 2021, the Chichester Rotary Club. Oh, I thought you were done, because he jumped in, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying.
Go ahead, I'll wait.
I was supposed to ask about Columbia.
Okay. Go ahead. Okay. So the Rotary Club is doing the Flags for Heroes, it's $50 a flag. And they will have a tag on it to, with the person who is being dedicated. So the name of the hero, Military Police Fire EMS. And you've seen them on Chi Avenue on the, the grounds of the, the school property, the high school property. They will go between, they will be posted between Labor Day and 9/11. And the cost again is $50 to Rotary Club. And if you're interested, the website is chichesterrotary.org. I'm sure they'll have it posted where you can get an application for that. And then last but not least, we're doing a, I am doing a contest in the second ward. So on Monday, 4th of July, what I'm going to do is go around and Sunday, but it's still Monday, the official day, so I'm going around on Monday. Because you're not, you're not going to have your decorations down by that, that room. So just to, just to, it's decorate your place, right? So we'll see who, who has their house decorated for 4th of July. There'll be a first and second place winner, they'll get a gift card to the Flag Store in, in Marble Township, which is where these items came from. All right, that's all I have.